Second.
Councillor Daniele, and thank you, Councillor Fornier. I actually have a change before we rush to vote that one.
Hi, councillors.
Good evening, councillor Bradley. I have a couple of just typos and last names which I can fix with Chris later, but there's one more important one on page, I think it's page seven for item 71-23. No, sorry, not that one. It's important because it's a vote, and I think we gotta get it right. Here we go. It's at the bottom of page 13, which is the vote for the capital program. So, the final vote on the capital program says that there was one aye and five nays. I think it was the other way around. Five ayes and one nay from councillor Fornier. That was the final capital program vote. The other ones are all correct. Any other changes? Two minutes.
Last name.
What's that?
Last name is still wrong.
Yeah, there's a few last names that I'm gonna work with Chris Wolf to fix. Yours is one of them. M A N N, correct? Yep. And Rue and Kathy Hi. They're two. Seeing no other changes, all in favor approving the minutes as changed.
Aye.
And the opposed, that's everybody, so that's five to zero so far. That passes, and we are up to our information exchange. Sorry, no, we have announcements as our third order of business, and I have four announcements to make. The first is about our library rolling out a new collection next week called the Library of Things. A Library of Things can take many shapes, but is at its core a non-traditional lending collection of useful or entertaining items like binoculars or Nintendo Switch. Many thanks to Freeport Can for their support and the FCL staff for all the hard work getting it up and running. Check out our website and newsletter for more information. And it's cool, I was on the website earlier, they have a power monitor, so you can monitor what comes out of an outlet and see if your fridge or computer is using too much electricity, and a bunch of useful things, charging cables, things like that. Second announcement is a very short one. It says property taxes are due May 15th. There's a little smiley face next to that one. Third announcement is that we are currently in the middle of Municipal Clerks Week, which runs from April 30th to May 6th. The profession was honored by Governor Janet Mills in her proclamation, which read in part, "The office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government throughout the world, is the oldest among public servants. The office provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, serving as the information center on functions of local government and community. In this important role, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. I encourage all main people to recognize and appreciate the exemplary professionalism of the clerks who keep our state and its many local governments functioning at the highest standard." So, I would echo the governor's comments, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for our clerk, who is also our secretary tonight. Thank you, Chris Wolf. I have one more announcement, which is that the town of Freeport, 2023 commercial shellfish licenses are available by lottery. The available licenses for this year are one resident commercial adult license and four resident commercial student licenses.
There are four student licenses available?
So, what it says. Please note, applications for the lottery can only be accepted starting Thursday, June 1st, 7:30 a.m., until Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 p.m.
Does the time of the submission of the application affect the grant of the license?
We have a wireless microphone.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't want to turn it off. The ordinance reads that we can only accept applications for the lottery during that window. So, if somebody submits an application outside that window, per the ordinance, then it wouldn't go into the lottery.
But all that submit within the window get the same lottery treatment?
Yes.
So, they don't need to show up early in the morning to be present in line, doesn't matter.
You do not need to be present to win.
Okay. Any other announcements from councillors? All right. If none, then we'll move to our fourth order of business, which is now information exchange, a time for councillors to exchange information about boards, committees, or other items. Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, I got a call from a constituent, actually a couple during the past week, letting me know that, I talked to Caroline about this, that David Mosher has offered the property that is at 22 Main Street to the town as a donation. Don't know anything about it, don't know whether he did or he didn't, don't know whether it stands, don't know the conditions or terms, but since I hadn't heard about it, I thought I should pass the information along to the council, because it seemed to me to be relevant to a lot of things that are happening over there, either actually or potentially, and that we might want to think about finding out whether it's real or not, and if it is, how to capture it if certain things do or don't happen. So, it's not a plan, it's not a program, it's just a piece of information that I wasn't aware of, maybe I should have been, but I wasn't, and I don't know if other councillors are aware of it, but it's an offer, it seems like a pretty generous one. End of exchange.
Other items of exchange? Councillor Egan?
Yeah, last week, actually, at our last meeting, I mentioned that we were gonna hear very briefly an explanation of an opportunity coming up for the town to engage an initial letter of interest with a solar developer company named Revision Energy, who is already a partner with the town and the sewer district. And the opportunity is that Revision would pursue grant funds, and at their entire expense and as well as operating, would install a level three direct current fast charger, which is currently the fastest way to charge an electric vehicle. And the participation from Freeport would be to identify a location, tentatively in pencil, we're looking at the location down by the train station on municipal parking there. And so, the proposal would be entirely at the expense of Revision Energy, zero cost to the town. And so, the letter of interest is just to initiate with this company, allow them to pursue the funding that would put that forward. And so, I would just like to introduce James from Revision Energy to just very briefly explain a little bit about that. We had some conversation. The letter of interest is not a binding contract, it's a letter of interest, but allows them to move forward with some confidence that this is something that Freeport wants to do. So, welcome, James, go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the introduction. I will just say that my colleague Barry Woods would typically be on this call. He's been involved with the discussions with John now for, since the beginning, but he's out sick tonight, so I'm just jumping in at the last minute. We have been discussing this internally at Revision for a while now, and we're very enthusiastic about the opportunity to work with the town of Freeport. We're very familiar with EV charging that's available there right now, having installed the ones at the LL Bean, actually, not the Tesla ones, of course. A little bit of background, why we look to put an LOI in place. Revision is seeking a limited number of host sites in the state that would qualify for some of these grant programs, and there's a very limited amount of time that's available to pursue and prepare for these grants. We're really looking for this to be a 100% mutually beneficial arrangement, so that, you know, you offer some great locations, and we bring a very reliable and well-performing charging station service to your visitors at no cost. So, the town never has to worry about these malfunctioning or there being any costs involved. So, with that said, we have a lot of work ahead of us when we're preparing these applications, which involves working with our engineers and CMP to ensure that we're able to put together a great presentation and win this bid for the town of Freeport, essentially, in a way that maybe there's a town up the highway that doesn't win it. So, you know, that's what we're looking to do, and, you know, I welcome any questions, and if it's something I can't answer, I'd be happy to get back to you when Barry's in a better shape. Thank you.
Thanks, James. The, there's a draft of the letter of interest that is being finalized now, and talking with the chair, the two key points are that there's a requirement in there that Revision asked for, that it's called a license agreement, and so, we found out more about that, and really what that means is it's a proxy for a ground lease. In other words, they're gonna put their equipment on town property, and they just wanted to have some vehicle in which to legally locate that equipment. And the second piece of the letter of interest that we were talking about is that they're gonna go ahead and make the investment, they're gonna line up the financing for it, as well as the engineering and installation costs, as well as operation costs, and they would like to have the town concur that for a period of two years, we don't move forward with somebody else to do a level three DC fast charger, you know, within a few hundred feet of that same location. So, which I think is an entirely reasonable effort, since they're gonna go through their part to put in the equipment. So, those are the major components that we discussed of the letter of interest, and we'll have that finalized and available at our next meeting on the 16th.
Councillor Fornier?
The only question that's been brought to me, typically when a town does these type of things, is normally open to bids or other people that may be interested. So, I don't know if this has happened, and if it hasn't, and if we've done this in the past without going to a process for other people to come in, then it's public news to me. I, you know, I think we do this pretty much on all of our purchases and use of land, so that might be a little dig into history to see if this is something new. I think it is. I think it's a great idea, and I love the idea of our company coming in. I just wanna make sure we have a level playing field for other companies that may be interested.
Yeah, I can certainly respond, at least initially, because we had a conversation, Dan and I did, when this came forward about a week and a half ago. We're not actually procuring anything, so that is one step away from our bid process, where we would, we're making an effort to go spend money. The second component, I guess, of that dynamic is that Revision came to us, we weren't soliciting that from them, so we're responding to their request, as opposed to us saying, "We wanna do this, and this, and this," and then soliciting proposals from the community. They're chasing financing and grant funding, which has a tight window, so, but that's just my feedback on that. I wouldn't presume at all to be the final authority on how we make that decision with our process, but we're actually not procuring anything, so, since we're not buying anything.
Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, to that point, I mean, gonna go out to bid, ask somebody else to come in and give us something? I mean, that's sort of what we'd be asking, right? If we went out to bid, we'd be saying, "Is there any other company who wants to come in here and for free give us a level three charger?" That's, you know, and there's nothing to keep us from doing that post this, as long as it's not within a couple hundred feet of that location. So, I don't really see that as a restriction on us, but maybe it is. That's one. Go ahead.
Yeah. All I want to make sure is the process is open to everyone. I think sometimes when we, you know, we look at government, we want to represent everyone. That's all I'm asking.
Fair enough. I agree.
The other, this licensing agreement will have, in addition to the things you just talked about, other things in it, or is it gonna be just up or down, take this license? My question would be, for instance, the town's involved in facilitating at least a level three charger, are there any rules that go along with the use of that by the public? Certain length of time, somebody can't sit there for three days on a level three charger, and are, I mean, are there those kinds of issues that people who own charging stations or Revision knows about, that would, or should be in something like this, that Revision is gonna implement, because it's essentially doing it as an arm of the town, I guess? Or at least in participation with the town?
It would be their equipment, so the rules would be up to them, but James can answer that question.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, if Revision came in and said, and I'm for it, so it's gonna sound like it, but I will say it, if Revision came in and said, "Well, we wanna put a level three charger, but we're only gonna let people who go to LL Bean's use it," I wouldn't be for it, for instance. But if they came in and said, "Everybody's gonna have equal access to it, if there's congestion at the site, somebody's there for much longer than we wanted, there's gonna be a mechanism, we'll enforce it," somebody, so we sort of know how it's gonna go, so it doesn't become an administrative nightmare for us or for them.
James, go ahead.
Yes, so it's worth noting that this funding source, it's very rigidly regimented by the federal government in order for Efficiency Maine to receive the funds. So, you can go on, if you Google "NEVI," National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, it is very specific. For example, they have to be available 24/7, no restrictions to any one person, they can't be part of a special membership group, for example. You have to be able to use any form of payment. They have made it very, very restrictive about what we can do. So, they want these to be consistent across the country, they want it to be fully equitable. So, we have to go through an RFP process. So, I know you're, you would not be having an RFP in this situation for this letter of intent or interest, but Maine will be having a very rigid, sorry, rigorous RFP process, and, you know, we would be going into competition with other sites that might be just up the street from Freeport. So, just to provide some level of assurance that we wouldn't just be doing what we want to do.
So, I assume we could see those RFP conditions?
Well, it sounds like if we Google "NEVI," they'll be there, yeah. Councillor Daniele?
I'd be happy to follow up with, you know, Efficiency Maine has the information on their website, too.
Okay. Thanks. Councillor Daniele?
Are the charging costs regimented also? Like, is that laid out, how much they can cost, or can you raise the price to whatever you want?
That's a very interesting question. Maine, from what I understand, is very unique in that they have a clause that requires some limitations on what we can actually charge, either by the minute or the kilowatt hour. It has to have some comparison with the cost of driving an internal combustion engine vehicle, for example. So, we can't, we have some flexibility, but we can't completely, you know, we wouldn't be able to get a premium above what is kind of an average price for EV charging.
Okay, 'cause my concern would be, like, we go through the process, we put this in, and then, you know, a bad actor, not saying this would be this company, but a bad actor charges a million dollars for a minute, and it doesn't work out, and it doesn't have the intent that we're hoping for, and we've just given up a parking space for nothing. So, I guess I would just wanna make sure that there's some level of cost control to make sure it's still equitable for everyone.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, John, this would only be a letter of intent, it wouldn't happen if they don't get the grant, correct?
Right.
And then, one thing we might wanna flag, I don't know if there's any municipal restrictions on that lot for overnight parking with the train, so we might wanna just follow up on our end to make sure.
Certainly some details to work out on the actual physical location and distance and traffic inflow and that kind of stuff. It was highlighted because there's three-phase power right there.
So, is the intent that, at our next meeting, we'll have the letter of intent?
We will have, yep. And as much as is available. I don't know, James, I don't know if any of the details of the RFP are yet available that you're gonna be pursuing for the financing.
I do believe that, yes, they're available, because the deadline for the application is June the 22nd, I believe.
June something, yeah, right. So, we'll have those, we'll have those details available.
And then, the contract will be at some later date. If they get the award, they come back and say, "Okay, now we're ready to sign up a contract." Okay. All right. Good. All right. Thank you, James.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Well, we're about to do public comment in a minute, but any other information exchange? Seeing none, we'll do the town manager's report is up next.
Sure, so to follow up on one of your announcements, as a reminder, for the second half of property taxes, we now have the ability that residents can go online and pay those. Just a reminder, also, if you do choose to go online through the finance page on the website, there is a user fee that is passed along for each credit card transaction. Secondly, we did obviously have a lot of rain and wind Sunday night into Monday, we did have some flooding, we had some power loss, we had some down trees. I wanna thank Public Works for working really hard to get all of our roads open and up and running and clearing debris. I'd like to think that all the work that they've been putting in behind the scenes to keep our brush and trims limbed and cut and under control helped to minimize the damage that we had in this event, so thanks to Earl and his team over in Public Works. As mentioned last week, Public Works is doing spring cleanup, one of those things includes striping. You might have noticed that there's stripes on Grove Street. There's a lot of white lines. We're going back to, that's how it was years ago, we used to have to outsource it, so we kinda got away for budget savings. Earl and his team now have the ability to do that in-house. Nobody changed the parking that's permitted there, they just put striped, stripes within what was already allowed by ordinance, but it sure looks like a lot, and there were people parked out there today, so it's actually been really interesting, and, you know, of course, that aligns with some of the downtown visioning that we've been talking about. They do intend to do some signage cleanup for parking, no parking zones on Depot Street and Stripe down there, I think, which could be an asset if we do see some recently approved projects get built. There's a parking lot that's closed for surplus parking, so you'll see some stripes going up down there again. They're reflecting current ordinance, not making a change in who can park where, just making sure everything's striped accordingly. I did get notification from CMP that they are going to be doing some pole work and pole replacement. They do not think this will cause road closures or much traffic disruption, but it was an FYI. It's supposed to start this week, I don't know, or last week, I don't know how much they've got done with the weather, but it is going to be in the area of Desert Road and Estes Drive, so just be aware of that. And I'm really excited to announce that Mehdi Smith, our grant-funded sustainability coordinator, started full-time at the Freeport Town Office this week. Again, she's shared with Yarmouth, so half her time here, she's doing work for Yarmouth, but we're pretty excited. One of her main objectives is to help Freeport work with GP COG to create a climate action plan. You'll probably all get some emails this week, but there's a big climate action planning workshop that Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board is hosting on May 15th from 6:00 to 8:00. It's gonna be a great opportunity for residents to come learn about some of the work and data that GP COG's been pulling together. They're gonna have some information on Freeport's greenhouse gas emissions and some information on vulnerabilities, where are vulnerable populations in portions of town, and then they wanna hear from the community. What do you think about climate change? Are you impacted? You know, what are your thoughts on it in general? And then, there'll be some talk about setting, looking at that data and setting some greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. So, there'll be a lot going on, 6:00 to 8:00 on the 15th at the community center. And then, also kind of tying into that, you might have seen, and they're really starting to get their word out, but the Gulf of Maine Research Institute in Portland is doing a community-based science program. They're working with GP COG, they got some grant funding, and so, what they are doing, they're doing some monitoring of water levels off the coastline, and so, they're going into communities and finding sites on public property, and they're gonna be posting signs, and they're gonna be looking for resident volunteers to go to these sites during storm events and take pictures and report what they see. So, it's kind of further supporting all the scientific data out there to really see what's happening on the face of the earth. The timing on this program is great for Freeport, it's gonna provide data that we can use with some other work we're doing with GP COG. It could provide data for the climate action plan, and it could provide data for our comprehensive plan. So, I will have somebody at your next meeting from Gulf of Maine, just to give you guys a heads up of what's going on, 'cause they will be posting some signs on town property. They've been getting input from the Harbor Master and other town stuff, and so, we just want you to be aware, and they wanna know, you know, that the town of Freeport is a supporter of their program. My three minutes is done, let you move on to next.
Jim Pax.
I just wanna add on my thanks and appreciation to Fire Chief Paul here, who's crew responded to my house, where I had a 75-foot tree fall and fell six feet from my house, but took out my power line. Freeport PD responded and gave me some good direction and reassured me that I was gonna be all right, wasn't gonna risk a fire at my house, 'cause the wire was half on, half off, and so, thanks, Paul, for passing on to your crew who responded at 3:30 in the morning to my house.
You have power back?
I do. CMP showed up late yesterday afternoon.
Any questions for our town manager? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to our sixth order of business, which is our public comment period. So, this is a time for the public to come up and take three minutes to tell us what's on your mind. Not a question, not a time for back and forth with the council, but by all means, share what you've got. Mr. Arsenal?
Andrew Arsenal. Something we discussed last week that I was chastised on. I went home and read my downtown revisioning program. My concern was EV charging stations placed on public property. And on page 47, action number 12, create more EV charging opportunities. Work with local property and business owners. Key words, to increase opportunities for EV charging stations in downtown Lower Main Street. Not only does this encourage sustainable choices, it also has economic benefits, and some companies are adding EV charging stations to their parking lots to attract drivers to stop and charge and shop. So, the argument I proposed last week, which I was chastised for not supporting all of the plan, I believe my argument was correct, and it's also farther along in the Action Network diagram on page 117, same language. So, I think I was more in the right than wrong, I think I supported the right thing. I was challenged, I think, for not supporting and not wanting it on town property, when really the plan supports local property owners and business people, which was what my argument was. So, item two, I know you're not going out to bid for this level three charging station, but you are giving somebody, a company, a lease on a parking space. And I think that should go to a lottery, if you're gonna lease out parking spaces, to private corporations to make money. So, we, you know, maybe it should go to a lottery, maybe we should open it up to the public, that other people might wanna lease these parking spaces to put in EV charging stations. I know you're not purchasing anything, so it's not a bid process, but it is public property that you are providing to one vendor, so he can make money. So, I think that should be looked at at some level. I support Mr. Fornier's position here, and I think we need to look at both those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal.
Hi, good evening. Valley Severling Pine Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Freeport Sustainability Board. You can hear?
Could you pick up a little mic? These things aren't working.
If I move it, does it change the volume? It doesn't change anything.
The mic's fine.
I'll yell. Is that better? All right. Valley Severling Freeport Sustainability Board, I'm here to represent our group, and it's following up on this gentleman's comments. I'm here to actually voice the alternate opinion that we really should have level three chargers on the municipal lots, especially given the fact that we have an opportunity to get it for no cost to the taxpayer or to the town. to get it for no cost to the taxpayer or to the town. So I think you will have someone from Revision do a short presentation today about an opportunity to collaborate with, yes, a private entity, to actually go out and secure the funding for this level-three charger, which is worth upwards of $800,000. So if we were to go and look for this money ourselves, even if we were to apply for a grant from Efficiency Maine, we would still need about $200,000 out of the budget to be able to install this charger. As we have discussed in here at the chamber and also during the downtown visioning process, we really want to encourage people to come to town and one of those, one of the baits that we can provide is charging, fast charging, so people can come, charge their car, go get a cup of coffee, do some shopping, and basically aid in making the downtown more vibrant. So as far as me personally and the group that I represent are concerned, we strongly urge you to support this. I think it's a great opportunity. I don't think we'll do it without some private public collaboration. And honestly, yes, it will take up six parking spots, and yes, we will be working with a private company, and yes, I think we will all benefit. So thank you for giving it your utmost consideration. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Valley.
Oh, questions? I can answer questions, but.
Counsel, yeah.
Thanks, Jake. Is there a proposal coming forward with a specific vendor and a specific location? Have we seen it?
You will see it tonight, as far as I understand.
Tonight? We already did. The Revision Level Three, they just went.
Oh, that was quick.
Yeah.
But that's one site.
Yes.
And now you're talking about up to five more?
No.
Level twos?
Yeah, level twos, that will be municipal only. So the town is applying for level-two charging funding from Efficiency Maine. This is a completely different project from the one that you heard from Revision. You haven't heard it, you haven't seen it yet, but Adam, I don't know if Adam is here. No, he's not here tonight. The town engineer has actually filled out the application to Efficiency Maine, and he sent out an RFP. And I'm sure that at some point during the process, he will come to you and give you an update on how that's going. But if the town gets the funding for that, then you will have to approve it anyway.
If we get the funding, he'll bring it to us.
We're intertwining two different things right now, though.
Right.
The thing we just heard about is the level-three with Revision, and then the separate grant that Adam's working on that I reported at the last meeting.
He reported on it last meeting?
No, I gave you an update that he was applying for under the manager's report at the last meeting. It's on the website. I can send it to you guys.
I understand it's separate. My question is, has the council said okay to that? If you get the grant, we're happy with it?
So as part of the grant application, Adam needs to get, he has to go out to RFP to get pricing from contractors. So if he doesn't get pricing from contractors, he might not go forward with the grant, but getting that pricing from contractors, I think, will let us know what we're talking about for a dollar value. And I think during budget, we can decide if you want him to go forward with it or not.
For all the reasons that are being expressed, I think it would make some sense to have us, this group, weigh in on the, I'm for it, just to make it clear, but I would like to address the details of it.
Sure, we can bring it back to you once he gets prices, so we'll know what we're talking about for dollar amount. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Valley. Anybody else from the public?
Ken Mann. Was hoping to ask the gentleman from Revision a couple of questions, but there was no public opportunity for that. Came under informational exchange, but informational exchange used to be between you guys. You had somebody come in here as an expert, and we had no opportunity to ask him any questions. Hope we don't see that happen in the future. My issue here about parking spaces, I agree with Andrew. I mean, if I'm a business and I come into town, lease a building or something, and there's no, if I don't meet the required parking spaces, I'd lease them from the town. In this case here, we're going to say to a guy, you're going to make a lot of money here, but we're going to give you these spaces, but we're going to make everybody else lease the spaces. Am I off track here? Isn't that the way this is going? You're going to give, you're going to give these guys spaces, but if I'm a property owner and I don't have enough parking, I have to lease them from the town. That's the way it was in the past, and I assume it's still that way.
Yeah, we do have a lease parking program for businesses that need to lease parking spaces, and we have surplus.
What I wanted to ask this gentleman, didn't get a chance, was would this totally upset his, you know, applications for grant money, which is my money being shared around? Would this totally upset his process if he had to pay a lease to the town of Freeport for these spaces? I didn't get a chance to ask that question. I hope you guys do.
The proposal's coming back in two weeks for a full action, and there'll be plenty of opportunity to ask questions.
You do see my point.
On the 16th.
You do see my point. We're giving up six spaces, and it's not going to be for a year. If he puts this investment in place, it's got to be a long-term deal. He's not going to want to make, even with grant money, he's not going to want to give up, you know, this revenue source in a year. Plus, I don't know the packing situation down there. I really don't.
All right. We're only talking about a letter of interest at this point, so those terms about how many spaces, and I believe the proposed lease term is going to be five years, but I don't know that. We haven't negotiated that. This is just a letter of interest. My understanding is.
He said it was going to be a license, not a lease.
That's their vernacular, but the.
Well, there's a big difference.
The functionality of the document that we're talking about is a ground lease, so that they would have the rights to use, that their customers would have a right to use the parking space in front of the charger.
So when do you get to see this proposal in writing, this lease, ground lease?
It'll be available before we take action on it at the next meeting.
Okay, so I can get a copy before the meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm also on the Sustainability Advisory Board. I wasn't planning to speak, but obviously, I'm very much in favor of the level-three charger. Freeport needs a level-three charger. It's the fast charging system, and we have none now. And this really sort of ties us into an entire network of fast chargers throughout the state. To address your concerns about being, you claim that you're a taxpayer or a landowner or a taxpayer that, and that this is your money that's going towards it. The money that's going toward this is still the remains from the, I believe, is the remains from the VW TDI lawsuit. So this doesn't have anything to do with taxpayer money. This is, this is a previous lawsuit. That money was given to the federal government, is now being given out as charging infrastructure. So it's supposed to be used for this. The question is, do we want to lead the way? And this is how we lead the way. This is how we connect the dots throughout the state and the country, and this is how we, as a town, can lead the way. So I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Olens.
Andrew Arsenal again. I'd just like to state, I'm not against EV charging stations. I think we just need to sort out how they're going to work in town and who's going to, you know, what the particulars are. I have nothing against them. I just wanted to follow the plan and say, you know, maybe there's some businesses that want one in their parking lot, so people will come next to their store. That's what the downtown revision plan talked about. I'm not against them. If people want to put them on their property, that's fine. I think it's great. And if we want to have a level-three in town somewhere, that's great. I just think we need to work out these details, and I think there ought to be a chance for other vendors to come forward. And if we lease this guy a spot or license this guy for a spot, we need to be able to license other people. I think that's only fair. Fair to other vendors, not just one vendor that we've picked or has proposed. I mean, maybe there's this opportunity for other vendors to come to town and put up a fast charging station, or some other type of charging stations, just besides LL Beans. But the goal was to put them, as I see the plan, to put them around downtown, next to property owners, local property owners and business owners, much like Beans has theirs up there. People go charge, they probably go shop at Beans. Great idea for Beans. I think it should be shared with other people, and I think you need to explain to us how we're not following the plan, and have we approached local property owners and business people to see if they want one on their parking lot? So that's, that's my concern.
Is it fair to say, Counsel Regan, that, I mean, we can ask the guy from Revision in a couple of weeks, but is it fair to say if somebody else came along and said, I'd like to do a level-three charger on Town Hall or at the library, that we would entertain that, just as we're entertaining this? That there's something that precludes that from having?
Yeah, we're, we're being asked to participate, so that's, it's not something that's.
It's not exclusive.
They, they would like to have a condition that we don't do that right next to theirs.
Right.
Which makes sense. They're going to go ahead and take the, the risk and spend the money for the installation. They want to be able to, to not have a competitor immediately right next to us by their same partner, but all of that is to be worked out later. This is just the letter of interest to, to move forward with allowing them to pursue the funding.
Hi there.
Hi, Kristin Dorsey. Full disclosure, I am also on the Sustainability Board and did not plan to speak tonight. And I'm actually speaking as a private citizen who, this is an awesome discussion, fully respect all these different perspectives and kind of being mindful of all the options and opportunities out there. So I went full EV last summer. However, I didn't take my first road trip until a few weeks ago up to Canada, and it was a little stressful. And we ended up in the sleepy little town of Lock McGontic because they happen to have several EV chargers there. And I just think it would benefit Freeport to think about having multiple chargers around town, both, you know, on private and public property, and perhaps this grant funding, given how expensive they are and how busy it gets downtown. Because even in that little tiny town, the chargers were busy. And so I would just encourage you to look at all these different opportunities, because I will go back to that town, because ended up discovering that it's quite beautiful, lots of public art and beautiful scenery, not a huge tourist town, but I would return there because it's kind of a port in the storm right now for people who have electric vehicles. The one thing that I found very, I didn't expect it, but in talking about this charger that Revision is putting in, we got up there and we didn't have the correct Canadian apps on our phones, and we didn't have Wi-Fi because we were in a different country. And so the, and we assumed that you would be able to put a credit card in a charger. So this one Revision is talking about putting in, sounds like it's much, much more accessible to people from different places. And I just think there are so many mutual benefits to having many different chargers in town in different locations that are accessible, especially in places like the train station. Because in Canada, some of them are in these weird little parking garages that are built into mountains, and it's hard to find them. So, anyway, just my two cents as a new EV driver, and just that sort of nice civic responsibility to start supporting the infrastructure in Maine and on the eastern seaboard, so people can actually travel and move in electric vehicles. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dorsey. Anybody else from the public wants to come up and speak? Welcome, Counsel Pillsbury.
Good evening. I was on the way home. My wife is away for a week. I thought, what am I going to do? Let's, let's see what's happening at Town Hall. See my, all my friends. I'm glad I came. Freeport Climate Action is definitely behind this proposal. We hope it comes to being. You've got a great company that's led the way in the state. It's going to help the downtown. It's going to help the move to our, our transition to electric vehicles. That's what the future is. This is an opportunity to be continuing part of the leadership that I know this council wants to be. So please, support it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Is there anybody else from the public in the room or on Zoom who wants to address the council before we move on? I don't see anybody on Zoom with their hand up. I don't see anybody in the room rushing to the podium. So I'll consider that we can move on from public comment to our seventh order of business, which is where we take action on items of business. We have a relatively short agenda, followed by one item of other business and then an executive session at the end. So the first item on our action agenda is to consider action relative to adopting the May 2nd consent agenda, which has on it three items, the first of which is some donations to Freeport Fire Rescue, including a very substantial one from the Palavchik, so thank you for that. And then two liquor license, well, liquor license renewal for Athena's Cantina and an amendment to the liquor license for Main Beer Company, changing the class of the license. Any reason why we should consider these items separately rather than together? Seeing none, Counsel Pillsbury, would you read our consent agenda?
Sure.
Bring the floor.
Be it ordered that the May 2nd, 2023 consent agenda be adopted.
Second. Thank you, Counsel Daniele. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess that's none opposed, because that's six in favor, so six to zero, that passes. And we're up to item 85-23, which is setting a public hearing for June 6th for our operating capital and TIF budgets, which I believe are all of our budgets. And our finance director is going to tell us about that.
Yeah, this is literally just setting a public hearing to discuss your operating capital and TIF budgets for June 6th. That's what I got for you.
And other than that, there's also, may have missed it, but there's an opportunity for the public to talk to department heads about items.
Yes, May 10th at 7:30 in the morning here in council chambers. The public is more than welcome to come and speak with department heads individually about budgets that they have questions on that they may not want to ask in a public forum.
So May 10th at 7:30 in the morning?
Correct.
Okay. And other than that, they can always ask you or counselors or anybody else?
Anytime. Yep.
Okay. And then we have a workshop at the council level?
Yes, we have a workshop tonight, as well as on May 16th. After, in other business, will be another workshop. And as, if council wishes after the public hearing, I'm sure there will be either commentary during the public hearing or, you know, a workshop after that as well, to have a tentative adoption date on June 20th.
June 20th is when we vote on it?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for the finance director, Counsel Bradley?
Is the 6th anything more than a public hearing? Is it a vote as well?
There's no vote on the 6th. The vote will be tentatively scheduled as of now for June 20th.
June 20th?
Yes.
Yep. And given the way we're, we've handled the capital budget, we also have the opportunity to amend the budget that they're presenting to us. So if we want to propose amendments on the 6th, I'm not opposed to that. We can do it on the 6th, we can do it on the 20th?
My preference would be to have at least awareness of potential amendments by the 6th, so that I can have the adjustments on the fly for the 20th to make sure we have the right values that we need. Yeah.
Good point. Yeah, so even better to do the amendments on the 6th. Yep.
For a counselor like me, who's sort of every year coming up to speed on how this all works, are you still open for a half-hour session with a counselor who has questions that doesn't want to bore the public with?
Anytime.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be in line behind Mr. Bradley. I have a couple of small things.
Sorry?
I'll be in line behind you. I have a couple of small things of my own to ask about. Any other questions for the finance director? Counsel Fornier, would you mind reading this?
Certainly. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 6, 2023, at the town council meeting that starts at 6:00 PM to discuss the FY '24 operating capital and TIF budgets. Be further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and a notice be placed in the Freeport Local Channel 3 and the Freeport Town's website.
Second. Thank you, Counsel Daniele. Any other questions on setting the public hearing? All in favor of setting a public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero that carries as well. So we have a public hearing on June 6. So thank you, Jessica. And next up, we have two related items, the first of which is 86-23, which is regarding the transfer of ownership of the water storage standpipe tank off of Bow Street on Torrey Hill, which is our tax assessment map 820, Lot 74A, from the Town of Freeport to the Main Water Company. We have a similar item which follows for another standpipe over on Winston Hill. And I think our Town Manager is going to give us some background on this.
Sure. So we have people other than me in the room tonight that can answer additional questions for you. We have our attorney, Pete Van Hemel, here, and then we have representatives from Main Water, from Main Water itself, and then Rick Cheney, their attorney's present. But you guys last talked about this, from what I could tell on the record, in January 2022. We had conversation and learned a little bit about the history of the water tanks, which I will not go into tonight, but I did send you that information again. So basically, there's two water tanks in Freeport that we're talking about tonight. There's one that's on, kind of in the downtown area on Bow Street, Torrey Hill. That tank is currently owned by the Town of Freeport, and the land underneath is owned by Main Water Company. We currently have leases on that tank, we being the Town of Freeport, to different telecommunications carriers for antennas. The second tank that we're talking about tonight is in the area of Winston Hill. The Town of Freeport currently owns that tank, and we also currently own the land underneath the tank. We also have existing leases for antennas that are up there. So we are not talking about the land tonight. Everyone that owns the land is going to keep whatever land they own. We're specifically talking about the tanks and then the leases. So before you, what you had in your packet was some draft deeds that the attorneys had worked on with Peter, and that we've had a chance to review. A deed transferring the tank on Bow Street, Cory Lane, from the Town of Freeport to Main Water. The same thing for the tank on Winston Hill. That being said, anytime you do a transfer, there has to be some transfer tax forms that go along with that. In this case, we need a couple of exhibits attached just to reflect what carriers are up there, and usually kind of meets and bounds. So there might be a couple attachments that are added to it, but not substantive, really just reflecting current conditions. The other two documents you had in your packet would be a right for the Town of Freeport to retain the ability to keep leasing space on the tank to carriers for antennas, and to collect that revenue that we've been collecting over the years. So four documents before you. The attorneys and representatives are in the room. If you have technical questions, they can also get into some more of the background, which dates to the 1970 minutes, if you want to do that. Happy to answer questions.
Heard there any questions. Councilor Fornier?
On the existing tanks, we currently have several providers that do cell towers. So is there an opportunity, I understand we can keep the current ones that are leasing there, but is there additional possibilities for us to add leases?
There is, and we actually have a, we have one lease that you guys talked about a couple of weeks ago for Verizon Wireless. They're waiting for this to happen, so we can start that lease. And we have another carrier patiently waiting on the sidelines for Dish Wireless. They're also interested in going up on one of the towers.
Other questions for the manager or for the representatives? Councilor Bradley?
So, thanks, Jake. We've got a couple pieces of property. They're called tanks, right? We own them, and we're transferring to you, to the company, as is?
If you guys do need to speak, I just ask you to either go to the podium or grab a mic and bring it to your seat with you. And tell us who you are and where you're from.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Vanoy. I'm president of the Main Water Company. Yes, the tanks will be transferred as is.
Okay. And I understand that if during the period of use, the company makes a determination that they're not serviceable anymore, you can discontinue at any time you want?
Yes, we could discontinue, but we'd have to build new ones.
So there's an obligation for you to continue?
There's an obligation to serve our customers and maintain water pressure, which is maintained by water levels in those tanks.
That's my question. Thank you. Thanks for me.
Okay. Any other questions while we got them up at the podium?
Not for me.
Uh, Councilor Daniele, do you want to read the order?
I'm sorry, miss.
Okay, yeah, we, yep.
Just maybe one question. This is to do. And I'm kind of looking to the future. So my question is, we have two existing tanks. So why are our capabilities now for growth within the community? Are our supplies number one on Webster Road, where we have wells over there that replenish the water? So I want to make sure, number one, that these tanks will service us in future growth, number one. And number two, if not, is there a plan down the road that another tank could be added? Or do we have to expand possibly the tank on southern end of the town?
Yes. So what we generally do is we do, every 10 years, we do a master plan of the system, looking at projections on growth, looking at when new water supplies will be needed, when new tank capacity will be needed. So that's an ongoing thing that we do. At this point, we're in a good place. The next thing that we would need is water supply. So we continue to evaluate options on that. There may be interconnection options. There may be new water supply options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Daniele, do you have a question, or are you just looking?
No.
Okay. I'll mention, I won't go into detail, but the minutes are attached to the memo that's in the packet and on the website. But we, the town paid $225,000 for these, for the tank, one of the tanks back in the 70s. We generated close to $4 million in revenue from leasing the tanks. So just to kind of read that into the record, since we're transferring the tanks at no cost, we've gotten our money's worth out of the tanks over the years.
Was that money generated by the telecommunications lease, or was it from money paid by the water company?
I believe it's a combination of both, but.
That 1972 lease, our predecessor, Consumers Main Water, in that lease, that covered the bond payments for the tank itself on Bow Street. So there were payments from the company through the period of that lease, and then, as the Chair's pointed out, there's significant cellphone revenue on top of that.
Yeah. Councilor Fornier?
And I guess one more point I want to make publicly, and I think this is an important point, any fear of the maintenance or replacement costs will be borne by you, because you are now the owners of both tanks down there.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Daniele, why don't you read the order, and we can still discuss if we need to?
Be it ordered that the municipal release deed from the Town of Freeport to the Main Water Company, transferring the standpipe on Bow Street, Torrey Hill, and the telecommunications easement agreement between the Town of Freeport and Main Water Company be approved. Be it further ordered that the Town Manager be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said transfer, including any non-substantive alterations and/or amendments to the proposed documents recommended by the Town Manager or Town Attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Fornier. Any other discussion? Questions?
Our attorneys have looked this over, I believe.
Yes, our attorney is sitting right there, and you're not even asking too many questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilors. My name is Peter Van Hemel from Bernstein Shore. And yes, we've looked this over. This has been a very thorough, very collaborative process with the Water District, taking into account the relationship between those parties, the relationship of the town to the history, and the construction costs, the liabilities, the ability to continue to make the revenue from the cell towers. It's been very productively reviewed, I think. And we've spent quite a bit of time on it, and I'm confident in the content of the document as protecting the town's interests.
So, and, I mean, there are a whole lot of standard concerns in a contract like this, and I assume you've gone over them, and you're satisfied that they are at least normal, and there's nothing unusual about any of the assignment or any of the other terms?
That's correct. The documents do contain a number of standard commercial settings that are tuned quite well for this deal. We've made adjustments to some of those settings to reflect, for example, cooperation obligations that you sometimes see, where the town doesn't want to contractually agree to issue a permit. We've made all the adjustments necessary to the standard commercial inventory of those provisions that are in these documents, but they are present. So, again, they're quite comprehensive, and I'm confident in their, in their structure.
While you're up there, one of the things I think I read, but just to confirm, if the tank gets replaced, we still retain the ability to lease cellphone antennas on the new tank?
That is exactly correct. It's up to the Main Water Company to determine when the tank, which they will own, when that thing reaches the end of its useful life, they may take it down, in which case, if they replace it, your rights migrate, if you will, to the new tank. If they decide not to replace it, on the town-owned parcel, you can do whatever you want. It's town property. On the water company-owned parcel, if they choose not to replace the tank, you have the right to put up a tower, or let someone else put up a tower, to replace the franchise, the sort of the airspace, if you will, for the cell communications. So we have provided for the obsolescence and either replacement or discontinuation of those tanks being there. It's, both situations are covered.
Sounds like it's well thought through. Thank you.
And in the interim, the cell tower guys can put up temporary structures. So we've got.
On those sites.
On those sites. So we've got it covered.
Councilor Fornier?
Please. I think, I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So access for our public safety communications equipment will still be allowed on either tank?
Correct. It is specifically reserved at no cost.
Correct.
That the town has the ability to do that, provided, and the Main Water Company always has the final say on whether it can be located safely, so that there's no damage to the infrastructure of the tank, or the primary purposes of the tank, which is to furnish the public water supply. But that right is expressly preserved at no cost to the town.
Thank you.
I feel like I have to ask, just because I'll be in trouble if I don't, but I live on one of the streets that's adjacent to the Torrey Hill water tank. And there's two accessways, one over a private road and one that has an easement for the public utilities. There's no change to those easements, so?
No, there's no change to the easements. Those are unaffected, and rights of access 24/7 are provided. And in fact, we've done that for the water company on the town-owned parcel. So they get the right to get to the tank on the land that the town owns. We have the right to get to the tank on the land that the water company owns. The access rights are not modified by this agreement. They're preserved.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions before we vote?
Great. Good questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all the work that's gone into this. A little premature, because we have another one, but so far, thank you for what you did so far. So we've got item 86-23 for the Torrey Hill tank on the floor. All in favor of that one?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six to zero. And then quickly following that, we have item 87-23, which is almost the same, but for the tank on Winston Hill, which is on land that's owned by the Town of Freeport. And Councilor Bradley, would you do the honor of reading this order?
To consider action relative to the transfer of ownership of the water storage standpipe pipe tank on Winston Hill, Stagecoach Road, tax assessment map 23, Lot 420/0, from the Town of Freeport to Main Water. Be it ordered that the municipal release deed from the Town, Freeport, to the Main Water Company, transferring the standpipe on the Winston Hill, Stagecoach Road, and the telecommunications easement agreement between the Town of Freeport and the Main Water Company be approved. And be it further ordered that the Town Manager be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said transfer, including any non-substantive alterations and/or amendments to the proposed documents recommended by the Town Manager or Town Attorney.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Daniele. Any questions on this? No. So, Councilor Bradley?
Is there any difference in the deal? I mean, is there something at all unique about this one that should prompt us to ask a question, or to know something that might prompt a question?
I'll say, on behalf of the town, they're welcome to speak as well. Obviously, I don't mean to speak for Main Water Company. They're quite capable of doing so. But no, the structures end up being the same. They're different only to reflect the different ownership, where in, for example, one case, the town owns the land, it's reserving rights. In the other case, where the town does not own the land, it is being granted rights. So the verbs are adjusted to reflect the different ownership, but fundamentally, the transaction structure, the terms of use of the tank, the relationships between the parties are functionally identical at the two sites.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions?
Not surprising. All in favor of item 87-23?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero that carries as well. Thank you to all the folks from Main Water, from the town, from the law firms. 33 pages worth of documents here, a year and a half in the making, if not longer. So thank you for this, and also thanks for being such good stewards of our public utility. We rarely get any complaints about water service, so that's admirable. Councilor Bradley?
Sometimes we hear that we're a tough town to deal with, that it's hard to do business with us. Is there any of that issue going on in the staff? Not at all? Good, good to hear. Thanks.
Are you about to say something?
Dylan's the local superintendent operating.
Okay.
As some of you may know, Dr. Woodson is generally counsel to the town, but the town consented and Main Water consented to us staying involved with the company in this deal because of our background. And Pete stepped in and has represented the town on the negotiations. So the town, I would say that any future leases, communication companies on the towers, you know, peach and, I'm not going to tell you what to hire, but.
Can you please go up to the podium? Can you go up to the podium? Thank you.
Rick Cheney, Dr. Woodson, I was just saying that we are counsel to the town, my firm. But in this case, the town consented, Peter Joseph at the time, and Mark, or Rick Nolton, actually, who was Mark's predecessor, that we would stay involved on behalf of the company to finish this negotiation. And Pete stepped in and continued to represent the town on this matter. And as we, as you go forward, if other telecommunications companies come forward who want to locate on the tanks, Bernstein Shore should continue to represent the town negotiating those leases, because it would not be appropriate for us to represent the town, given that the company will now own the tanks. So, but it's been a very, very cooperative effort in a rather complicated transaction, and it's been a pleasure to work with Pete to get these documents, and a manner that worked for both sides.
It's really nice to hear you lawyers supporting one another.
I think we're all looking forward to getting better cell service in town, which is one of our motivating factors.
The company.
Yeah.
Stop sending P9 weekly emails.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
All right, we're moving on. We have two appointments to make, which would conclude our action items, the first of which is relative to the appointment of a health officer to replace our now departed Town Manager, who was our health officer. So our new Town Manager, our interim Town Manager is going to explain what's involved?
Sure. So when, upon Peter's departure, we knew we were going to need a new local health officer. I knew that person should not be me. And Paul Conley had a candidate internally who had interests, and seemed like they would be a more appropriate fit. This is something we're required to do by the state of Maine, and appoint them for a three-year term. Deputy Chief Scott Smith, who's a relatively new hire to the department, is actually an acute care nurse practitioner and a paramedic, and seems like he'd be a good fit. He's also willing to do the required training that the state requires for you to become a local health officer. Paul is here tonight. If you want more questions, that is just a snapshot. You know, working with Judy and past conversations with Peter, we feel like this is a good, a good thing for the Town of Freeport.
Thank you. Councilor Bradley?
Does it cost anything?
Yes, there's a small annual stipend associated with this. That will be compensating $2,500.
Other questions? Councilor Fornier?
Will he be authorized to take action if a situation file where there's a health risk?
He will be authorized to do any duties allowed by him under law. In reality, a lot of the complaints come into Town Hall, and a lot of cases, the health officer in the past has worked closely with either general assistants in certain cases, or the code enforcement officer, depending who has the right enforcement arm there. We'll delegate to that person.
Excellent. Thank you.
And for anybody following along at home, too, there's a memo in the packet and on the website about appointment duties and capacity, and likely complaints for local health officers. Other questions for the town? Other questions for the town manager or the fire chief? Counselor Egan, would you mind reading this one?
Be it ordered that Scott Smith be appointed as Freeport's health officer for a term expiring May 2nd, 2026.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Daniele. Any other discussion? All in favor of the appointment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, that carries. Thank you to Deputy Chief Smith for offering to be our local health officer, and congratulations. All right, our last action item is 89-23, to consider action relative to appointing a CPA for our audit. And our finance director's going to remind us what that involves.
Yes, so every year, we bring on a certified public accounting firm to do our annual audit. And this is just making that appointment formal, so.
And this, we usually get a report from them in September, October, so they come up and announce the results of their preliminary audit, I think.
Correct.
Counselor Bradley?
Given the kinds of questions we've been facing up here over the last couple of weeks, is this something we put out to bid or is this something that we continue because we've had a good experience? How do you handle it if we're procuring something like this, which I take it has a hefty price tag to it?
Yeah, there is a point in time when these services are gone out to bid. This firm was hired, I believe, within a year or two before my hire. So they've been our auditor for nine to 10 cycles. And it's not uncommon to remain with an auditor because you rely on the knowledge and history and you have the ability to change the staff internally without losing the history of the client relationship, but yet turnover for fresh eyes. But there's nothing to say that at some point we can't go out to bid again.
Is nine or 10 years a long time?
Not, yes and no. I know there's, within our circle, there's a lot of communities that hardly ever change auditors. And they actually, I just saw a post today, someone struggling to find an auditor for them because with them being short-staffed, the auditing firm that they've had was doing more work than like they would do here at Freeport, and they can't afford to do that because they don't have staff either. So it's difficult to, I think, currently to potentially change or find an auditor. But there are other communities that it's, you know, every six years. It's, you've got to give time when you do change to give the firm an opportunity to learn your process and your, you know, how things work. So it's not uncommon for it to be at a minimum of six to eight years.
Counselor Fournier?
So Ed kind of asked a question. Number one, what is the cost of budget? I guess I would be interested, was there an increase from last year or have they maintained the price?
Excuse me. There, I, in the budget, I have a slight increase included. I have not received their final quote of what the services will be. Typically, you know, as with anything, I would see like a 3% increase, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would like to say, just add, sorry, I would just like to add with them, the price that we pay is very fair, given the amount of work that we prep and do for them. You know, there's other clientele that, you know, as I was mentioning, that they have to go and do a lot of the schedules and the work. And, you know, I essentially create the financial documents for them, and the final audit that you see is generated out of our office. It's just finalized and like bound by the auditor. So I think that's reflective in the price that we pay, for sure.
So we're getting a review, we're getting a review, not an audit?
No, they audit.
They audit all the-
Yeah, I mean, I pulled together the schedules for them, and then they go through all the detailed documentation to ensure that the schedules-
They don't go expense document to, I mean, they're not going item by item, but they are?
They will ask for a list of accounts payable that we've paid, and they make a selection to verify that they were accounted for appropriately, for sure.
Is that what a post audit is?
Yep, it's considered a post audit, yep.
All right, I think we're back to Counselor Pillsbury to read this order.
Be it ordered that Runyon Kirstine Lett be appointed to conduct a post audit for fiscal year 2023.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Daniele. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the appointment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero to complete our record of unanimous votes for tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Jessica, for that. So that's the last item in our action part of our agenda, and Jessica's back up at the podium, for our one item of other business, which is essentially further discussion on the budget, which we'll have tonight. And it sounds like we have another opportunity on our next meeting, May 16th, to discuss the budget, followed by a public hearing on the 6th, when we can make amendments, and then the final vote on the 20th. So is there anything new you want to share with us, or are you just here to answer questions?
I can, we can kind of go through it one of two ways. Prior to the pandemic, we used to have a schedule that we would go through to, go through each of the department requests. We can do something like that, or I can leave it open to what you have for questions. I had the department heads become available tonight to hopefully at least get preliminary feedback on their areas, so that on the 16th, it can be either just a follow-up with them or, and/or primarily the department that I'm responsible for, that we would go through on the 16th.
And at our last meeting, you gave us sort of a summary PowerPoint presentation, but we didn't walk through the budget itself.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
I wasn't sure what council's temperament was. Like I said, historically, we've gone org by org and through the 50-page, I mean, I gave you 160-page document to go through at the last meeting, but, or for this meeting, but the bulk of the actual budget is like a 50-page document. And so prior to the pandemic, we would go through those 50 pages, and I would kind of take you through some of those changes and what we would be looking at. We can either do an approach like that or I'm open to just if there are specific questions. Obviously, tonight, with my preference being if you have those within department head responsible budgets to be addressed first, I guess.
Thanks. Counselor Fournier?
Couple.
Yeah, go for it.
One is the idea, and I discussed with you and I discussed with the fire chief, I know you two are going to get together, so I'm not going to discuss it tonight, but that's like a staffing model that we discussed, so I'll be looking forward to that in the future. The other, the one, and I don't know if there'd be support for it or not, but I know you did a report on what we paid out for mileage. And my specific goal is, I'm kind of looking at the position of the code enforcement officer who puts a lot of mileage on his personal vehicle and has to drive on construction sites and probably not the best use of personal vehicles where he has to go in his job operations. So I would like to have that researched again to see if we could supply an old cruiser from the PD at no cost to the town, because those are really not a lot of value, and assign that to the code officer. It would have a minute savings on a mileage, I understand that, but I think more importantly, it doesn't expose his personal vehicle to where we're going, and I think we should be providing that employee a vehicle from the town. So those are my two at this point. Thank you.
Jessica, is that something that you can research and get back to Counselor Fournier?
Yes, my response would be if council wants to explore using an old cruiser that isn't potentially already earmarked for a different purpose, there's no, there's nothing prohibiting that. From a budget standpoint, I don't know in FY '24 that I would change anything because of the transition time of getting these vehicles in and being able to use them, but I think there would be future operational changes that would occur. You would see an increase in vehicle maintenance as well as fuel, which are at a higher cost than what we currently pay for mileage, but it depends on what perspective you're coming from of what you want to address. If you want to take the liability off of a personal vehicle and, you know, have it be not reimbursed through mileage expense, then it's, that's perfectly acceptable.
Daryl?
Jessica did do a report for us, and the savings wasn't that significant. I tend to agree. However, I do think down the road, it could be, and it's, again, I just look at, someone have to use their personal vehicle for doing the town, I'm not sure if it's quite fair.
Does he, have we talked to him? Does he want to use his personal vehicle?
I have not talked to him, but I just, I don't know, I see other communities throughout the state that do supply a vehicle, because that's a lot of mileage and a lot of wear and tear on a personal vehicle. He runs a pickup truck, and I don't know if he bought a pickup truck lately, but they're really not that cheap.
I currently have not had a personal conversation with him to see what his preference would be. I mean, it would be, it would be a transition for anybody. You know, there's comfort in driving your own vehicle, you know, in some of the places, as Counselor Fournier mentioned, some of the places that he may have to go, his truck would probably be more desired than in a potential old cruiser, but we now have SUVs, which are, you know, kind of similar in that fashion. But the biggest thing is, it would be a change. And I'm sure in his personal vehicle, he has everything he needs to do inspections, and it would be potentially having to outfit the current vehicle with what those needs may be, because some of that may be personal, you know, equipment at that point. There are certainly things to discuss.
Daryl, your spirit of what you're saying is not that you would require him to do it, but that you just make the offer, if you choose not to use your personal vehicle, we can figure something out and make one available for him.
I think it warrants a discussion, I just think that, yeah, no, it'll be a policy decision.
I may offer, if that's something we want to explore, there, we have other employees that do inspections and have to do field visits, so that might, if we're going to do it for one, we might want to take full advantage of it and see if it makes sense for other people, or people like that are traveling to conferences, you know, take the town vehicle instead of your own.
It doesn't have to be an old cruiser, it could be any town vehicle, right, if there happened to be-
It's probably going to end up in an old cruiser. We're not going to have an old fire truck going around, so probably.
All right. Counselor Bradley, do you have a question? I thought I saw your hand.
I mean, part of this is what I want to come talk to you about, so I don't display my ignorance, right, but since you made it clear that you've asked the chiefs to come in, as I look at this budget, it's big. The increases are significant, and that's how I start. And when I look at what makes it significant, a lot of it has to do with employee payments of different kinds for different reasons.
Yep.
And to be honest, I don't have in my head or in the documents I've kept from past years, a trajectory about how we got here, but I have recollections. So when I see a whole list of different kinds of-
Can you turn your mic on, Ed, please?
When I see a list of different elements or aspects of the increase in payments to employees that go from COLA to step increases to new employees to, you know, I'm dealing with a dot in the universe, and it would be very helpful to me if, and I can do this in your office, that's fine.
I'm more than happy to give an overview to see if it addresses your question, and if not, we can either expand the discussion or you can come see me for sure.
The only reason I'm asking it now is that because once you get into that and you start to understand that, then your question is, what about that employee? Or what about that addition? What about that COLA for that person or that group? And that's what the chiefs are here for, right? I mean, to explain that sort of minutia about how it works and what the effect on their departments would be if you did or didn't do it, or if you cut it, or if you asked for some money back, or however you would talk about it.
Yeah, so I'd like to start by saying, as far as the two chiefs in the room, there's no change, there's no change to the staffing at fire rescue, as it stands right now. So what is in the budget is what has already been appropriated for in the past. The increase is going to come from the pay scale, which I'll talk about in just a minute. As far as the police, their budget includes, or it's actually under marine resource officer, but their budget includes for one additional shared patrol marine officer position. And that was pre-discussed and determined and has already been publicized, sorry, I couldn't think of the word, you know, to fill, because there's a need for that that was approved.
May I ask, who approved that?
It was discussions between Peter Chief and myself, as far as-
Staff decided this was needed and you went out and we have to budget it?
Yes. I mean, unless you say no, and then-
I understand, but that's what we're here for, is to ask these questions. I have no objection to the marine patrol, so that's not the point. The point is, is a million dollars in new money for-
So, yeah, and it's not just that. So this position is covering because our current, we need someone to replace our current marine officer when there's downtime as far as sick vacation time off used. And we currently have someone part-time, but there, I may need to pull chief on this, they're either going to be retiring or no longer available. So there was a need to get somebody in to fill that spot, and it's being requested at a full-time status versus just a part-time fill-in, because we also need the patrol side as well. Am I explaining that correctly?
I think that's fairly accurate, yep.
So that's the situation with the two chiefs that you referenced. As far as the pay scale in general-
Weren't there three positions, three new positions?
Not in regards to police and fire rescue. When it comes to just the chiefs that you referenced, there's only one full-time position being added in this fiscal year.
Nobody else here is asking for another position in their department?
Well, there have been asked, but they are not currently in the budget. The library has one part-time position that is in this budget at a cost of $16,000, but then there's also outside of the department heads, the ask for a communications position that is, I believe, falls under general administration. So, yes, those are the positions I was referencing initially, just the chiefs that you were asking since they were in the audience. But to kind of talk about the pay scale as a whole, so we have, we have a multi-step pay plan that goes over the course of 25 years, okay? So you progress, you come in at a grade, and you can progress across the steps, depending on your tenure here and where you come in based on your qualifications of hire. And so the first chunk of those steps are annual increases. And then you reach the point, after five years, they become five-year steps. So for the first five years, if you start at step A, for the first five years, you get an annual increase. And then at your fifth year, you're then at that rate of pay for five years, and then you jump, and then you're at that rate of pay for five years and you jump. So, and that progresses over a 25-year plan, okay? So you have, because we've had turnover in staff, we have a lot of staff that's in that first five-year chunk, which is why you see step increases that are included in the budget. In addition to that, we did, I did, an adjustment to the pay scale, because the wages that were being, or the wages that are being paid and are presented on the existing pay scale are falling below market, and we're losing people. So there's an adjustment in the pay scale to kind of bring some of those wages up to retain existing staff. And the third component then is- And the third component then is COLA, which is, we do an analysis based on CPI. We look at area communities within our, within our circle of what they're providing. And there's an adjustment of COLA to the pay scale. So this year you're seeing, you know, three major impacts where normally there would just be two. But as far as the adjustment I made to bring the base of the scale up, we do that on a regular basis, but usually on an individual basis. So one year it might only be one step of that scale. And it's because we found that that one step is falling below market. This is just a situation where inflation and the economy has just thrown everything out of whack that we're, our scale is low compared to our peers. And it's bringing, trying to bring everybody up to be able to retain employees.
So if I'm right, that all, the cumulative impact of all of those changes is roughly a million dollar addition to the operating budget?
In it, yes.
Okay.
In addition, in addition to the benefit costs, so.
Oh, I forgot benefit.
Yep. So in addition to everything I just went through, and this is the majority of your budget. So when we get into the individual budgets, if you so choose, there's very little change being asked.
Other than this?
What is being asked is really just market changes, right? But the biggest chunk of this is your employees and benefits. So the benefit side of it is, we actually, there's not major changes with the benefits other than the additional staff. And not just the additional staff that's in the FY24 budget, it's the additional staff that was also put when we did the FY23 budget, because we increased staff levels in FY23. And there's an ask for three more positions in FY24. And so you have additional benefits that you have to budget for because if they take health insurance, you have to pay for the health insurance and retirement costs. And so our retirement plan has actually, I believe the rate actually went down 0.2% to what we were paying. So there was actually a decrease in the retirement rate for mainstay retirement. But we, because we have additional staff as well as those benef, or pay changes that I just discussed, it increases the value of what we need to budget to pay. And then that, that, yeah, that should cover the benefit change.
Can you allocate or attribute to each of those categories a number of the million, out of the million?
Like how much is salary and how much is benefits?
And how much is first-year steps? And how much is, you know, increases and how much is COLA?
I, yes, I do have that. I'm trying to remember if I printed it to put in my book or if it's on my computer, I'll be honest. I do, I do have that. And if needed, I can run to my office and print it.
No, no, I don't need it tonight, babe. You could get it to me for our, one of our next thing. That'd be great.
Yep.
Can you, do you have like a rough percentage of what's attributable to just contractual increases out of that piece? Because that appears to be the vast majority of that, the overall increase to the operating budget. Is that fair?
Yeah. And that, and that can be part of that, what, what I provide based off of what Ed just asked. The, I want, I had him in my head until it was asked and I'm like, crap, I don't think I printed it. But yeah.
The reason I say that is because there's a difference between.
Yes.
Adding cost because we're making decisions to do so and having to keep up with the cost of rising health benefits and things like that.
Yes.
That's a commitment we've already made to our staff. And, and I think that it's just, it helps frame the discussion.
Yes.
When people know that it's not just, we decided to add an extra.
Sure.
1.2 million to the operating budget because we felt like doing it.
Right.
This is things that we have to do to maintain.
Yeah.
The level of services that we have as a town.
Absolutely. And if there happens to be a break in questions that are specific to a department, I'd be more than happy to run and grab that paper that I inadvertently did not print to be able to give those numbers.
Go ahead, Daryl.
I'm looking at Public Works Fire Rescue PD. And I'm kind of focusing in on overtime pay. And at some point, you know, when your overtime increases, it comes to a point where you're better off to bring on an employee because the costs ratio. I know we have the cost that is picked up from benefits when we do bring on a full-time employee. So I don't want the answers tonight, but I do, I want to throw this out there. Are there better ways to look at staffing models or whatever maybe to help address those costs in all those departments? And, and, because I know like on memory, my memory is not as good as it used to be, but I think for a long time, Chiefs, the PD had a, which really worked well. You had a marine gentleman and also did patrol. So we really got a bang for the buck because they could cover open shifts or whatever. Do you have enough personnel to use that model like we used to do? Or we just can't get the staffing now to, to use that model?
I'm, I'm going to just interject real quick that that's the position that's added into the budget, is that shared marine resource patrol position.
Right.
But.
Yeah, this, a lot of what's been brought up so far is kind of a circular talk where everything feeds into the next category. So historically speaking, going back five or six years, we had two positions on the waterfront, a harbor master.
Yeah.
And then a marine resource officer that did primarily enforcement, conservation. Boat licensing and moorings and, and things like that were split between those two positions. Five or six years ago, we ended up, the town ended up allowing the harbor master position to kind of go by the wayside. And we heaped all the responsibility for those two positions onto one staff position. As we made tracks from that's five or six years ago to today, we realized that we're, by continually heaping more work on one individual, we were reaching a point where it was a struggle for that individual to do all the tasks that normally had, historically had been assigned to two people. So the position that we're trying to fill, which would be full-time marine in the summer, and then when things got a little more quiet in the winter, we would use that position to augment patrol. We felt was, to quote you, a good bang for your bucks scenario where we were keeping that person busy, but yet no understanding and recognizing that we have a very busy waterfront for seven or eight months out of the year.
So if I'm understanding this right, five years ago, you, because the harbor master separate, that you took that in underneath the premise of the police department?
Council and town management made a decision at that time that they wanted the position to have kind of a direct supervisory.
Yeah.
Link with one of the existing departments. And they felt it fell under the police department.
I think that was a great idea.
Made the most sense.
I, I don't disagree with that decision. So the, I guess my only question gets back with your existing staff. Is there someone available there that could pick up? Or are you just stretched too thin?
So, so here's where the, the piece circles, makes the other third of the circle. So we have been essentially one to two positions short of full staff for like the last five years. So every time we get to a position where we hire someone, we have attrition. So in the last five years, I think we've had seven, six, six people retire from Freeport PD. So that is, every time someone retires, we have to start that process all over again. So perpetually we're down. And currently, as I stand here tonight, we are two positions short.
Thank you.
That are unfilled.
That, okay, that's very helpful.
Which in turn affects the overtime. I mean, I can, I can give you all the nuts and.
No, no, no. I, I, I think you've explained to the point I've tried to get a using personnel. And, and as you say, you've had a difficult, what, time filling those positions for a number of years, which is, we understand that. You've explained it to me, so thank you, Chief.
I'm happy to talk. If anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to go over that.
Yeah, I've got two questions there related. The, did we used to have an assistant harbor master position that we paid for only in the summer to augment the harbor master? And does that go away if we hire this person?
Well, interestingly you bring that up. That position, that gentleman Frank Orr worked for us on a per diem, part-time basis to kind of fill in days off in busy times when our one harbor slash marine warden position was away at training or on days off. That gentleman took a job with Kennebunk as their full-time harbor master about eight or nine months ago, which, and we were, he did a lot of work for us. So we lost that position nine or eight or nine months ago. So we currently do not have a part-time, that part-time kind of seasonal position that we normally have.
And instead of rehiring a per diem role, we'll put those funds towards this new permanent role?
Yeah. I think, I think that, that's kind of the thought process. It's, it's, it's such a busy waterfront that it's nice to have that extra coverage. And my goal with this position would be to give us overlapping coverage on the days that are busy.
Right.
And also closer to seven-day-a-week coverage, which we currently don't have, which I think it would be beneficial to, to everyone on the waterfront.
Like July 4th weekend, there might be two, two guys down there.
Yeah.
And the other related part of the question was for the, supplementing the patrol, it seems that there'd be a bigger demand for services in the summer when we have the big tourist influx. So supplementing the patrol in the winter is nice to have, but not as critical as, it doesn't obviate the need to get more patrol officers in the summertime.
That statement would be almost 100% accurate if we were not post-COVID. Starting with COVID, we, traditionally, we always had kind of a dip in the wintertime for calls for service. And if you look at the statistics, we traditionally had kind of a dip. And we would use that time to train, re-equip, make sure everything was ready for the next season, encourage people to take vacations if they could. The last three years, we have not seen the traditional dip in calls for service that we normally would get. We've actually seen a market spike and increase. So it's kind of thrown our, it's kind of a new normal for us because I, we haven't seen it wane yet. So, you know, it's, I'm looking at a 25-year snapshot, it's kind of an aberration right now, but we have not seen it subside yet since COVID hit.
So that extra pans in the winter will still be really useful.
Yeah, it would be put to good use.
Yeah, Daryl.
One question, and I didn't see it in the budget, but maybe it is, Chief. Traditionally, you used to have part-time people issued parking tickets. And I know that kind of went away during COVID because, you know, a lot of people weren't, weren't coming here. Is that something you're going to try to reinstitute again, Chief, to maybe bring a little more revenue? We don't know what that would be, but that may help.
Yeah, that, that's something where the town manager and I have had talks historically about getting that position back up and running. We advertised last year and we had, we had no interest. And traditionally, we get those individuals from, you know, high school seniors, young, young people in the community that are in college who may have an interest in doing something like that. That's usually where we get some interest. And so usually we put the feelers out there. We usually do a posting as well. But it's a fairly menial position. And I think, you know, when they can go to Wendy's or Walmart and make $20 an hour, I think, you know, $10 or $11 an hour writing parking tickets and getting yelled at is not super high on anyone's list right now.
Oh, I, I agree. But I guess this gets back to the point that we talked about, that Jessica talked about earlier. You know, we're having an adjustment now in salaries.
Yeah.
We knew we fell back. You know, so I, you know, I think it's important that we have a comparable salary across the board in all of our departments. But, but, but I argue, is it time we look at that position and you pay a comparable rate? Because you're exactly right. You don't, to get yelled at for $11 an hour, it doesn't make any sense. But on the other hand, if we paid a, a rate that is reasonable, we had revenue come in to not only offset the cost, but possibly bring in a little extra revenue, I think that's, that might be a wise thing to look at. And.
Agreed.
You know.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's something worth exploring. As long as the, we're willing to pay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else for Chief? Jessica, you look like you have new stuff for us.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah, so to kind of give you the, the breakdown of that million, the benefit, or I should say, the base adjustment that I did to get all the scales up. And this includes both the union scale, which is contractually obligated, as well as the non-union scale, equates to, and these are rough numbers, approximately 188,000. The step increases that all the employees are receiving equates to approximately 84,000. And the COLA increase requested for this year for everybody, both union, which is contracted, and non-union, equates to 279,000. And then the benefits make up the remaining 260,000-ish, 270-ish.
So with the COLA adjustment, that will hopefully put us in a better position next year, correct? We're really kind of, this has been happening, not, it's been happening for a long while.
It, it has. And, and the, the COLA adjustment being requested is based off of CPI, which is what's currently in the union contract and felt to be equitable for non-union staff as well.
I, I think that's important. Thank you.
And we did poll the, our area communities. And it's very, very similar to CPI. I don't have the, the final numbers because other communities are on different budget schedules, so we don't have them all. So I don't have all the final ones. But what we had preliminarily was very close to the CPI amount being asked.
So that ends up, ends up being like 80% of that.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Which is why I was very, you know, that's what makes it so nerve-wracking to come before you with, you know, a solid budget, knowing that over 80% of it is salaries and benefits. And it comes down to what wants to be offered for a level of service.
Is it fair to say though, and not to blame anyone for this, but if we don't keep up annually with COLAs or whatever, we paid ourselves into a corner.
Yeah.
After not addressing it for five or six years is where we are today.
Absolutely. 100, 100%. And, you know, it's, this is definitely a tough year. I don't know that we, it's not that we hadn't been making strides towards it over the last few years. But, you know, you have other economic factors that have played into, into this as well. And, yeah, it's, it's been difficult. And, you know, and the hard part is, is when stuff like this isn't addressed through the budget process, we end up mid-year having, or at some point through the year, having to make a change because you become so far below your peers in, in market that you're, you'll lose everybody. And, you know, so you have to make those adjustments mid-year and then you have no budget for it. So that's, yeah, that was the struggle, you know? Because the, these changes before you are definitely reflective of mid-year changes we've had to make this past year for, for staff. So.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can I say, it's kind of diverging from the, the track we're on, but it's sort of related.
Sure.
I was just looking under the, the rescue org. So under account 1, 1,001, the professional salary.
Yes.
It just, it looks a little odd. Can you, I'm just wondering what's the story behind it? So the 2022 actual is 106,000. The 2023 budget was 237,000. And we're sitting with a projected 2023 number of 96. And then we're bumping the 2024 ask up to 276.
Absolutely. Valid question. So what ends up happening, there are actually, you, you kind of have to look at fire rescue as a whole. So there's the, the fire org and there's the rescue org. And then there's also the net enterprise fund. And so what's before you in 2024 is the transition of that net fund into the fire rescue component. Ideally, I would love to have fire slash rescue in one org versus a fire org and a rescue org. But that's not what currently exists. And it makes, when, when you make changes like that, it makes it hard to compare apples to apples. So I try to do it over time versus all at once. Because then you, you know, similar to what you're seeing, you wouldn't be able to really see the numbers in comparison. The reason you see some of those fluctuations between the 2022 actual and the budget and then the projection is that the 2023 projection is systematically generated based off of where we are year-to-date and what happened in the remaining months of this fiscal year last year. Okay? And, and that's systematically generated. What hasn't happened yet is. What hasn't happened yet is me moving those funds from net and/or moving them between fire and rescue. Because the, the difficulty or the disconnect that we have is that when staff comes on, they could either be assigned in the system to fire, or they could be assigned to rescue. And it, I don't want to say that that's necessarily random, but it's just what they're designated at, at that point of hire. And so it's, it's hard to budget per se between fire and rescue because they do so much intermingling of that work, right? So sometimes I move that money between fire and rescue to fall within the budgetary guidelines of those two departments. When I, when I pull my wages together, I'm looking at fire, rescue, net altogether to know that we have enough in totality. But it may get split differently between fire, rescue, and net when you look at them on an individual basis. So some of those entries that I do have not been done yet to reflect in there. But the biggest change that you see is that the numbers here reflect the transition of net being its own fund into it being a general fund-covered operation.
And, and is the, the gap between budget and actual a product of just vacancies?
To some extent, yes, but they're covered by call personnel. I think if I had to.
I mean, the, the, I'm asking the question just because I want to dig into, are we covered where we need to be covered? Is there, you know, do we have to be more aggressive with our hiring? I mean, are there other things to, you know, obviously you're going to have some vacancies just year over year, but just wanted to make sure that the services are being provided and we're, we're.
Yeah, no, I, I definitely feel the services are being provided. The difference between the 2022 actual, where we were in the 2023 revised budget, is that in 2023, we budgeted for the hiring of captain and lieutenant, captain and/or lieutenant positions to be able to fill some of those gaps in the, in the structure of coverage that the fire, rescue department needs. So 2023 includes the cost of those, what are now full-time staff to, to create those shifts that, that need coverage. So that's the biggest difference between those 2022 actuals and the 2023 budget. The reason, second reason why the projection is low is I think we, we had four positions over the 2022, 2023 year that we were filling. And I think we most recently just filled the third one. So it took a while to fill, and we still have one left to fill, which is, which is why there's no new request, or why I didn't put forth a new request in 2024. Though chief definitely would love one more administrative personnel in his, in his fleet. Did I do that well enough? Because I did not put that in.
And just one other follow-up question.
Sure.
So you mentioned that the 2023 projections are formulaic based on timing of expenses hitting last year. Do you think that's where we're going to land, or do you think that the projection is, is high for right now?
I think this projection is low for where we'll be at the end of the fiscal year. Because what, I said.
Well, I meant, I meant overall, like I'm assuming all the projections are set up.
Oh, all together, yeah, no, all together, I think we're fine where we need, where we need to be, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One other question, I'm going to go back to the old days of Dale, when he always challenged us on revenues.
Yeah.
To command, so how, and how are we doing there? I know we always got really creative on going out and doing different programs. So are we taking full advantage of that, I guess would be the question. I don't need an answer tonight from the department heads or you, or is there some opportunities that maybe we could look at to tweak to maybe hopefully increase a little bit of revenue, so.
Yeah, as a, I can certainly look into that with the department heads and get back to you on the, on the creativity side of things of what we're looking at. I can tell you what's before you is based off of where we're currently at because that's what I felt we had appropriate staffing for to, to pursue. So there are a few increases and, but for the, for the most part, there, I'm not budgeting for a lot of creativity. I feel like, if I'm being honest, I feel like I got burned with doing that in FY23 because I budgeted thinking that we would get someone to be able to do parking fees, and we didn't. That's an immediate 40,000 that I have to make up on the expense side, you know what I mean? So I'm usually pretty cautious and, and don't typically budget year one of creative revenues until I know that it's going to be a sustainable source.
And, and I think, you know, you have been conservative, which the town always has been, and I think that's important. But I think also maybe sometime we need to, we get a little bit too conservative, and, and there's a good example of that. And if we're, you know, not allowing to increase our pages for parking to get someone in there reasonable, that we lose a whole, that whole revenue stream. So maybe look, the department has got, get a little creativity. And I don't know how the rest of the council is, but I certainly would support increasing a little bit, hopefully with those expectations to command to help on the revenue stream.
Absolutely.
That would help.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Actually, four questions that might not be for you. It's probably not for you, it's for the, the department heads. So on the last page, there's a list of things that didn't make it into the budget.
That is correct.
And there's human services, which I think we all know about. And then there's four, what looks like four positions that it sounds like, or what I'm reading, were asked for, but were not recommended in the final budget. So I guess what I'm looking for while we have the department heads here is what are we missing out on? So if we don't hire a.
Valid question.
Part-time staff for the library, downtown vision and contracted engineer, library cleaning service, and another medic position. So if you guys have anything you want to say about, hey, because this didn't make it into the budget, this is the impact, so.
Here's your chance.
Figure out who wants to rush up first.
I'm afraid of.
I'll go first.
Sure.
My name is, what's that?
Is it okay that I leave my bookbag?
Yeah, sure. My name is Adam Bliss, I proudly serve as your town engineer. And for a little, little bit of levity, new glasses, they're transitions, so I'm like, whoa. I think I'm going to take those off. Chairperson Piltch, I, per your direction, I actually sat down with Peter and we discussed this. And his recommendation was, obviously when he was still here, to give council some options of, here's what we would pay if we contracted workout, here's what we would pay for salary and benefits to hire an assistant to me. The timing didn't really feel right to hire an assistant. Because of Peter's departure, council's goal to kind of keep things steady over the, while we, you know, do the manager search. And frankly, the, this, this budget, you know. So what are we missing? I can answer that a few ways. A simple example would be the town has a new environmental permit that is required to, to, to address. Things like monitoring and sampling and street sweeping and annual reporting. It's a new permit with a lot more conditions attached to it. And the cost of not complying with that permit is significant to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars per day per violation. Doesn't usually get that far, but it has happened to one of our, one particular community within the greater Portland region. So that's a long-winded way of saying a mess-up. I'm not going to let that happen, but that's a simple example. Another way to answer that question is to give you a graphical printout of all the projects that I manage on my own, and I have that here. I thought we were going to set a table, so it's kind of awkward to show that to you. But it's a huge number of projects that I am responsible for keeping my finger or on the pulse of communicating to staff, council members, producing minutes and agendas and all these different types of things. So those are two examples. What I really want to be clear about with council today is I'm not whining or complaining. I love my job, I love my coworkers, I fully intend to make a career here. I'm just being very pragmatic and upfront in a communicative way of the magnet, the volume of work that I, that I am responsible for. So in the end, a conservative request of $30,000 to hire a contracted person for FY24 is where things landed. And specifically to help out with the downtown vision projects.
Could we leave things open so that if there's a project that comes up, I'm looking more to the council here, if there's a project that comes up that requires a lot of additional engineering, that we can go back and say, hey, this thing requires an extra $5,000 or $10,000 that might make more sense to contract out because Adam's plate sounds like it's pretty full. Darryl.
We talked about, and not to add money to the budget, but the ability to hire specialized, whether it's in zoning or whether it's in the environmental issue, whether it's in grant writing to, to do that, which I think is wise as opposed to adding on more full-time positions. I don't know if that's in here, but I think this gets back to the comment I made earlier. If we want truly to try to bring in additional resources to maybe help offset the budget, we probably ought to have a mechanism to do exactly that. I don't know what the, the magic number is, but I, I think all the department heads are, are pretty strapped. And we probably are going to be asking a lot more of them down the road. I think it's only fair that we try to come up with some sort of mechanism, maybe to help about on it, so we could take a specific project like was explained to us with that permitting, say, okay, here you go, we're going to farm that out for the year to someone.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm sensitive to, you know, as it stands now, we're going to go back and ask residents for a 17% tax increase. So I don't know that I would want to increase the, the budget to say, let's collect more money just in case we need it. But I would say if there's a project that comes up, maybe we add in the cost of additional engineering to that project. If we decide we want to build another bike path or something like that, we say, well, in addition to the, the X amount it's going to cost for the bike path, it's going to be another $10,000 worth of engineering that we need to add to the grant or to the price of the project so that we're aware of it. And it's not just, oh, that's fine, we have a town engineer, he can do that because it's, it's free, or appears to be free. Matt?
This is partially a question for Jessica, sorry, I know you're just going to sit down. As we, as we kind of look at, based on Adam's sort of request, what's your approach to salary savings? And can you give an estimate as to collectively as a town, what we might see on a normal year at the, at the end of it in terms of unspent salary dollars based on vacancies?
Oh, good question. I don't know that I've done that particular analysis.
I mean, not to cut you off, I, I'm guessing, you know, it just rolls into what the surplus is that we move over to the general fund.
Yes.
But is there a mechanism for us to capture a piece of that to contract for work that we may not otherwise be able to? That way we don't have to appropriate any additional money to add to the budget. I mean, it does, we pay for it one way or another, it's just not going to go to the general fund, but it's an option. I mean, we could set maybe a threshold or a cabin to do that.
Yeah, so you're correct in what is saved in wages does default to the, to the fund balance at the end of the year. During the course of the year, when we have savings that we're starting to recognize in the individual departments due to wages, those wage dollars cannot be used to buy supplies. Like, you know, I can't take those savings from wages and, and buy material things. You know, there's specific, you know, auditing, auditing requirements to not, or accounting principles to not do that. But I don't know that there's any restriction on when that surplus hits fund balance. You, you kind of, in a sense, do some of this by putting, when we do have excess fund balance, putting that to offset the next tax year. And you could certainly use those dollars, like currently, I think we're at 675,000 that we budget to offset taxes each year. You could very easily use some of that to assist with, with some of these projects.
I mean, I, I guess, I'm just thinking like, right, unspent salary dollars means that something's not being done.
Yeah.
Right? So mid-year, can we make the adjustment to say, we normally would have a full-time employee being able to do this? The question then becomes, can you move it from one or to another? Are you, would you be comfortable with it?
Absolutely, if it's for more, yeah, if it's, if it's to supplement wages or bring someone in to do, you know, the, the work that a salary would have been provided, absolutely, that can be, that can be done, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I kind of went down a rabbit hole with your question, but now that you rephrased it, absolutely.
Jake?
Can you remind us how much we have in ARPA dollars? And could we use ARPA dollars for a contract employee?
You can use ARPA dollars for a contracted employee. My hesitation with doing that is that, or not necessarily my hesitation, my caution in doing so would be that you're using temporary funds for a permanent use. If this is just a contracted service of, of one-time visioning project work, I would be 100% for that purpose. I believe you have, I'm trying to remember from the last appropriation. I believe you have somewhere around 400,000 left in ARPA funds that would be available.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next department head, maybe?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, we've got three more rules. Thank you, Adam. And we've got, you know, we've got time to address the things that we're hearing tonight, so we don't need to solve it all tonight, but if you do hear something you want to follow up on, by all means. Courtney.
So in my budgetary request, two part-time positions. There are three driving factors for that. These positions would allow my full-time staff, of which there are eight of us, to do a targeted expansion of library services that are currently being asked for that we're unable to fulfill. These positions would also assist with the coverage and give me flexibility for planned and unplanned time off. We don't have any per diem employees, we don't have any substitutes. So that would be a huge help, and we're busier. So I did some statistics going into 2020. So March 2020, we were on track to have a record year for visitors. And then we know what happened to 2020. So between then and now, we have a 38% increase in visitors, which is a great problem to have. But that meant that I used to be able to have one person at each of my two service desks. I now need to have four, and we're a staff of 10. And they're all doing all kinds of other work. So I could get more granular, but that's the overview of my two part-time positions.
I mentioned there are services that are being requested that you can't fill, what are those?
Primarily outreach. I've come to you before and updates to tell you about various thoughts about that, working with FCS. At this point, that's on hold for obvious reasons. We could do something in-house, starting very small. We want to get out into the community. We could start with seniors. I think that's where the highest need is, to get them books, but also get a staff person there to do some tech time, some tech support, which we do in the library. We're unable to do that. The other thing that is unfortunately a new trend, because life happens and people take vacations or they're sick, I am having to cancel programs. We, I try to be very targeted with that. But I put a priority on in-house service level, so I have to have four people, and they're, and more people are doing things at the same time. But, you know, customer service and that experience in the building is our bread and butter. So that's really, needs to be the focus of it. So primarily outreach.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions?
I guess I have another question. So $60,000, I, I'm not sure you put it, but the grounds of maintenance for someone to clean the library. So I guess that's a significant increase and probably the. increase, and probably the difficulty of finding someone to, to work. I'm wondering why that's there.
So, I'll, I'll start, but you can certainly say.
I'll be adjacent.
So currently, the town hall uses a cleaning service. A lot of this was previously handled by Buildings and Grounds, but then we had staffing issues and shortages within Buildings and Grounds. And from a price point perspective, we were able to cover the town hall facility, but the library facility was at a much greater cost. So Buildings and Grounds put their focus on the library, and, and we covered town hall with cleaning service. And now with the changes at Buildings and Grounds, it would, it would be better to bring in a cleaning service, but again, with the price point, it's before you for consideration, but it's currently in the budget, expected for Buildings and Grounds to continue to try to fit that in.
But you have a retirement coming up on buildings, which
Correct.
could complicate the way, should we, because normally, it's two people in that department?
Well, there, technically, it was three.
It was three.
And we've been short one. And yes, now we have a retirement.
So it could be down to one, hopefully.
It could be down to one, but we, but we currently do have three. We were, we were able to do some shifting, and we have three individuals in that department. But yes, there is a retirement, and obviously, we'd be looking to, to replace that, hopefully.
And if we don't, we'll have some extra funds that we could use to hire a cleaning service if we needed to?
Correct.
To Matt's point, right, unspent salary dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So I think that just leaves us with the medic position?
Yes.
And we lost our fire chief.
I guess we lost the fire chief.
We had to go fill in for the medic position that we don't have. While he's out of the room, I did want to clarify, Council Regan pointed out to me, we're not asking residents for a 17% tax increase. It's a 6.7% tax.
I was gonna, I was gonna clarify that when we got to a moment, yes.
But our expenditure.
But the, the town portion.
Is up 17. That's the only part I care about, right?
Yes. That's, that's the only part you really have control over, correct?
I understand.
The budget increase to the tax is the 17%.
Right.
Correct.
And it's because the school did such a good job this year of keeping their tax increase lower, that affects, right? They're, they're only asking for 3.5%, so it kind of counteracts our 17%. So total 6.7% tax increase is the current proposal, I believe.
And that, and that tax number could go down based on a number of things, like valuation, grants.
Absolutely.
All of the ways we funded. I get it all, but what we get.
I'm so proud of you, Ed.
You're teaching me, inch by inch.
You're taking the words right out of my mouth for me.
You know, it's, it's not, for someone who's up here saying 17%, all of a sudden to correct him like he was an idiot, that's not right. That's the part of this that it seems to be, that we focus on, and we should know the answers, and it's not to blame anybody, it's just to say, that's a lot of money. If I told my wife, she, if she can't, I'd put it the other way. If she came to me and said, we're going up by 17% in expenditures next year, I'd say, well, who are you going to be married to? You know, that's what. Taxpayers haven't shown up in this yet. Maybe they don't show up, maybe they don't care, but my guess is, they do. And that's our job.
Yeah, yeah. If I keep misstating things and saying we're increasing taxes by 17%, they'll show up, but we're not. We're not, we're not. No, I, I, I said 17% before, I was clarifying. Yeah. Darryl?
I think we discussed this at the last meeting, the expenditure for the $26,000 there for Tri-Town Little League, that was going to move to capital, right, John was, I think, a valid point for that.
Yeah, it was a timing thing, I think, right?
So, I, I would just like to throw a little more commentary out with that. The, the request didn't, it, it, so Hunter Road Fields is a town facility. There's an operating budget for Hunter Road Field that we currently pay for, are charged for the maintenance of Hunter Road Fields, and we have some contingency money there, and the, the water there, and so the, the, those are the budget items within the Hunter Road Field operating budget. This, this request, one, timing, for sure. Two, I'm not sure that I would have initially put it under a capital consideration to begin with, because, one, it, this request is not coming from the Hunter Road Field Committee, and it's coming from a nonprofit Tri-Town Little League for dugouts. So, again, I'm not, I'm not saying that it can't, I'm not saying that maybe it shouldn't, I'm just, I'm suggesting, even out of the gate, had, if this came to me the way that it did, I would have put it in the operating budget for consideration as an outside service, because we have an operating budget for Hunter Road Field. And I would have expected it to come from the Hunter Road Field Committee asking for their budget, much like your sustainability committee is asking for, or had asked to retain 40, that's not, actually not on this list. The sustainability committee had asked for $40,000 to remain in the budget to be used for services. And I pulled it because it was initially for the position that's been filled by Medi and covered by the grant for the year, so I pulled it out of the budget, because I was nervous enough coming to you with a 17% increase, I didn't need it to be a 19% increase. So, that's kind of how I viewed that, is that the, these committees have an operating budget to ask for this stuff to be funded from, and I, I would have put it initially under that anyway, much like Conservation Commission is asking for the Marine Conservation Corps labor, that's coming out of this operating budget as well. So those are, those are just my thoughts on this, but again, that's just my thought.
Yeah, John?
Jessica, I'm on the Hunter Road Fields Committee as the council liaison, and we had conversations about the dugouts, I don't know, at least two months ago? It's May. So, yeah, at least in March, if not even in February. And so there was a, so it's probably oversight on my part, that we didn't actually track it from that conversation at the committee to how it showed up for you, to, so that you could see that it was something that the committee talked about and endorsed, and moved, you know, was wanting to have, move forward. So, it was not Tri-Town Little League out here on their own channel, coming into the town to ask for this. It was something that was brought up at the committee, and the committee talked about it, and we had good conversation, and, and so, that probably was my, my fault for not bird dogging that as, as the council liaison. I just thought it was moving forward. I didn't realize it had to, that you would have perceived it as coming from an outside organization. But I guess I'm, separate from that, I'm still curious about why a capital improvement to a physical asset that the town owns is considered an operating expense? And, and could we move it to a capital budget?
It, it can absolutely be moved to a capital budget, especially of this value. I'm not sure that initially, with it being something that the town would have instituted, that it would have immediately jumped to that level or that number. I think if I remember, this is for like six dugouts, if I'm recalling, we might have done it over time.
It's dugouts for, for the baseball fields, and the arrangement coming forward was that the, this budget amount was to cover the cost of materials, and the user groups, of which there are many, or several, were going to arrange for all of the labor and installation, so that we didn't have to burden our public works crew with that installation and construction.
Perfect. And, yeah, and that's, if, if it's council wishes for that to come, or be added to the, the capital plan, that can certainly happen. You know, there's obviously, at this point, no reduction to the operating budget by doing that move.
It's not in there yet, right?
Exactly. So, you know, if council, council wishes to have that in there, there is no, no need for it to not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Paul, do you want to tell us what we're missing out on if we don't fill the medic position?
This is what it would be with wages and benefits, that first line.
Okay. So currently, we've got, we operate on a four-shift schedule, and each shift has got a dedicated paramedic firefighter on it. They're full-time employees, they, you know, town employees, looking to get that fourth shift filled with a paramedic firefighter. So that would accomplish that. We've been working to put the captains on place, and this past year, we got money in the budget to take and fill that fourth position. So that basically gives me two full-time people 24/7. The other shift that we, the other two positions we rely are per diem people. Although, we're great, but we're also subject to them not showing up for work, because they've been forced in at their full-time department, and that's on the last thing, and then for us to try to find somebody. So, not having that position leaves it open to a lot of overtime to fill that, to, so that we have a basis of our continued response, because, you know, trying to have at least four people on shift 24/7 to answer, you know, medical calls, fire calls, and such. The impact, as, as Jessica pointed out, is to put that full-time position on, is in 97, 95,700, you know, with benefits and everything. Now, I'm going to use some terms that Chief Goodman said, is circular. One of the challenges that I have continually is the pay scale, is the appropriate pay for the positions, because when I go out trying to recruit and so forth, what pay rate am I, and we're on the low side of that. So that becomes even more of a challenge of trying to fill these positions. And again, not getting them filled leaves us, you know, to backfill and, you know, overtime. Per diem workforce is great, it's worked well for us, but the amount of call volume, what we have in place, and delivering the services, it's making that shift, so that we can, you know, I don't want to call it own, but basically, their priority is here, not their full-time, you know, department somewhere else. So that was, that was the emphasis of trying to get this year, and accomplish that. So.
Would there be a decrease in the per diem and overtime costs if we filled it with a full-time position?
There, there would be a slight decrease in overtime, and basically, probably would drop down my per diem costs, would not change much, other than I'd have a core that would be filling in those, those other hours, you know, and shifts and so forth. Right now, I've got a roster of about 45. I'll also tell you is that I've got about 10 active call members, you know, and per, and the majority of them are related just dealing with fire, they're not, they're not, you know, active with EMS, but 80% of our, 85% of our call volume is related to emergency medical services. So.
Okay. Darryl?
So I, I talked to the chief and Jessica, and they're going to talk later on about different staffing models, but I, I want to focus back, we used to have administrative assistants in the fire department, that was cut for whatever reason, a couple of years ago. So, I know for you, because I get down there and try to get a free cup of coffee on Sunday mornings, because I'm a fixed income, being a retired guy here, and you're usually pretty good about having coffee there, so I appreciate that, chief. But I see you in there doing payroll. So, it kind of troubles me a little bit that a department head has to go in on a Sunday morning and do payroll, because we're not adequately staffed with office assistants in the department. So I'm hoping that by looking of, of maybe reorganizing some of the existing people you have here, I'm not sure if this would be filled or not, but maybe there'd be a way to eliminate that need for you to go in there and do payroll on Sunday mornings, because I, I, I'm not, I don't think that's right. So, that's where I'd like to, I'm, I'm anxious to have you two get together with further discussions, and we'll see where it leads us. But I think that's, hasn't been put in the budget, and I think that's a critical need, that we should be looking at, because I know the fire chief's job and, and public safety, and public works, so in some aspects, is 24/7. So, you shouldn't have to be in there every Sunday doing payroll to pay the people. That's my idea on that.
And I'll, I'll just share, is that part of that is, is to, Monday mornings are, are hectic and everything, and they've all got to be done in time. I've got 45 different people, I'm collecting, you know, parts of operating budget as far as payroll, from various pockets of call force, overtime, career staff, and it just, you know, want to make sure that I don't have a lot of mistakes and, and cause that. You know, we've got about 45 people in the department, and to manage and keep track of, so it would be awful nice to get back to have an administrative assistant, you know, in the department. But when you look at the priorities and so forth, is, I'll be honest with you, is the response side of it, and being solid in the response side, is, is more of a higher priority for me right now on that, is that we can assure that that's going to happen. But you're right, you know, I, Sunday mornings and so forth, you know, coffee's fine, but it's just, you know, it does take a lot of time on that. But there's more to it. And just kind of some of the things that are on the radar for me as chief, as the AME director, is that is, you know, you hear a lot about the sustainability, and I'm venturing into that arena more and more, because we've got a hazard mitigation plan that basically we have to be part of, Cumberland County. And this past year, you guys signed off on endorsing that. There's components of hazard mitigation and sustainability that's coming for it, so there's just more demand on me going to, you know, some of the different meetings and stuff, to collect that information, to put it into the plan, and submit it to the county. So there's a lot, some other challenges that I'm going to be faced with down the road here. So hence, having an administrative assistant would be a nice benefit to basically do some of the documentation and typing and working, you know, putting the plan together in conjunction with, you know, my knowledge and so forth that I've got to gain from this arena. So, that's just kind of the sidebar of that. So.
Thanks, chief. That's helpful. I'm out of questions, so what else do you guys have? Darryl?
The only question I have, these were recommended not to be funded, so if we don't take action on these, they won't be funded.
Unless we amend, before we're asked for an amendment, yep.
Thank you.
Matt?
Oh, sorry. No, go right ahead.
Which is going to be a separate question.
I, I just wanted to point out, I received an email really quickly, because this is along the lines of an item that's not in the budget. I'm not sure if there's necessarily a high demand for this, but where it came from a resident to my email, I feel I should at least make you aware of a question that's been asked, which is, while the council is looking at the operating budget, this answer is no. There is no money currently, but is there thought to having some public restrooms or porta-potties at town locations, such as the Southbury Port Wharf, Porta Landing, Town Memorial Park? I'm sure there are many more. So, just throwing that out there, that, that currently, publicly for the resident too, that I will respond to, but so in case they're watching, there is nothing currently in the budget for portable restrooms or porta-potties. But, if you so choose to want to consider that?
Darryl?
If we all remember Bustin's Island trip last year, and the discussion was that the only restroom down at the Wharf was the Harrison Lunch one, and he was overloaded, because the other restroom was in, I think, Baker's Building, I believe, and that got closed, because they found a person living in the restroom, so he had closed that. And we kind of made an agreement, and I had talked to Peter about this earlier, that we would at least get one down at the dock, because there's a lot of people there, probably, you know, the harbor mascot can verify that, that probably should not be putting the requirement to use a private business's restroom for people that are using our dock. So, that's something we probably ought to figure out. You know, we were hoping to have that down there around the first of May.
Matt, do you have something?
Yeah, non-restroom-related. Question on the revenue expectation for property tax? So, and it's not, it's not the number, it's, do we have any risk in the, because the property tax freeze program that the state implemented, is there a risk that we're not going to, we're budgeted for 8.187 million? I mean, is there a risk if the state can't fund that? Like, what's the impact to us on this?
Uh, yeah, there is definitely a risk if they don't fully fund it. And I believe we're, the stabilized amount is, at today's dollars, is currently, I'm going to say, over $450,000. So if they don't fully fund it, some portion thereof would, would be, of that $450,000 would be, we would be covering.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Please write your legislatures.
Other questions for Jessica or department heads? Jake?
Page six under cemetery. It shows an original budget of $30,000 for last year and $30,000 for 2022 as well, but we used 18,6 and 5,001. I think some residents have talked about cemetery funds, and I was just curious as to what these funds went to?
Yep. Bear with me one second.
No problem. Sorry, it's very specific.
No, you're, you're fine. I just want to get to my right page here. If these...
Page eight. Sorry if I didn't say that.
And I'm on the wrong one, sorry. That number... I'm almost there. Here we go. Cemetery.
Six lines down.
And my fingers are nervous in front of the camera here. So 20,000 of that is for the veteran care allocation, which is currently at $25 per grave. And we have approximately just under 800 graves. But I budget for 800 graves at $25 apiece. So that makes up that 20,000. And then 10,000 is added for any maintenance that we may need to do that comes up on, on the town-owned facilities.
And so the other cemeteries that residents are asking about are private cemeteries?
So the cemeteries that, the, I think what you're referring to is the question has been asked why they're not receiving investment income. And that comes out of the individual cemetery trust. That does not come out of the general operating funds. And you will most likely see that on your next agenda item for great discussion, I'm sure.
But so is there a reason that we budget for 30, but we only spent five last year? And like, why does it fluctuate from 19,000 to 5,000?
The, so it's, the 2023 actual is to date?
Yeah.
So the projection is where we're going to end the year?
Right. So essentially, we've spent 5,000 this year on cemetery maintenance. I still, on the next agenda, will have for you some disbursements, which will come out of that and cover that 20,000, which will bring us closer to that 30,000 mark that's being projected.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Who does that work? Who gets that $20,000?
The $20,000 for the veteran care goes to the individual cemetery associations for the, the personal work they do to, to care for the cemetery with veterans buried in them.
There's an association that manages that work?
Yep.
Matt?
Got a question, just a comment. Just thank you. This is really well put together. And to the department chairs, you guys are great stewards of our money. And it shows in, you know, when you look at where we're going to be projected and where we've been projected in the previous years. I mean, you understand that these are taxpayer dollars, and they're important, and it's not, it's not, it's not taken lightly. So I appreciate that. Makes this process a lot easier for us. So thank you.
I echo that. And thank you for being here tonight, too. Early, you got off easy. You didn't need to come up to the podium. But thanks to the rest of you for sticking around till almost nine o'clock, just in case we had questions, and apparently, we did, so appreciate that. And thanks for putting it all together.
Absolutely.
Page three of the package, of course, is the recognition. Here's, so outside evidence of what you just said, Matt. Job well done.
Thank you.
Distinguished budget.
That's right.
All right. I believe that's the end of our regular agenda. We just have what I think might be a short executive session, but I will go ahead and make a motion, item 90-23, to consider action relative to an executive session pursuant to, one, MRSA Section 4056C pertaining to a real estate matter. So I move that the town council enter executive session.
Second.
I'll go with Counselor Egan on the second for that. All in favor?
All right.
That's everybody. All right. So we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll be in executive session.
Are we, we're not coming back out?
No, I don't expect to come back out with any action.
So I can end the Zoom feed?
You can end the Zoom feed.
Do you want to talk to Chief of Public Utilities?
Oh, I forwarded the message during the meeting. I gave my heads up, so we got a meeting, a message. The guy didn't...